All right. Good morning and welcome to the Friday edition of the January 18th and 19th, 2024 Board of Trustees Meeting. I want to welcome you to our second day of meetings. Yesterday was an extremely productive day. We got through a majority of our calendar and next we have some vital training, training that we've all been looking forward to, all been discussing at length. And then to cap things off, we'll be revisiting our strategic plan in light of many of our discussions over the past, past day and really the past year. Before we get into that, though, I wanted to introduce our newest Board of Trustee member, Mattia Stevens, who's appearing remotely today, and I wanted to give him the opportunity to introduce himself to the public and to our various stakeholders. So, good morning.
Good morning, and I appreciate the introduction. The 34 now years of practice that I've got behind me, I think, is a level set for the work of the Bar Board, and I look forward to doing that with the, my fellow trustees and grateful to the Senate for their appointment. Thank you.
Welcome, and we are absolutely grateful to the Senate for putting you in a position where you can greatly impact the lives of Californians and protect the public. So, looking forward to your service and to a fun-filled year. So, thank you. All right, we're going to go to our next agenda item.
Chair Stallings, I apologize. Yes.
All right. Got ahead of myself. I was so excited. Madam Secretary.
Barahona.
Present.
Buenaventura.
Present.
Chen.
Present.
Cisneros.
Here.
Good.
Here.
Huser.
Here.
Shelby.
Present.
Soel.
Present.
Stallings.
Present.
Stevens.
Present.
Tony.
Present.
Trejo.
Present.
You have a quorum.
Great, thank you so much. All right, we are starting with 707.3. This is our Conflict of Interest in Form 700 training. This training is being presented by Stephen Hernandez from the Fair Political Practices Commission, and then our very own staff attorney, Brady Dewar. And I would note that this portion of the meeting will not be recorded per FPPC rules. And this is a presentation and discussion item only.
Yeah. Excellent. Back to the recording. We, we, we heard from Stephen on the ins and outs and details on Form 700 disclosures, and I just want to make, we said it again and again, but that we, in office of General Counsel, Lean and I in particular, are available as well as all the FPPC resources. So, we want to make this as, as a painless process for you all as possible. The next part of the training is on ethics and conflicts of interest generally, and it's, it's definitely related to the disclosure obligations, but more focused on what your conduct should be as a board member, in particular, as it relates to when you need to recuse yourself if there is a conflict of interest. I'm going to share another presentation. Just give me one moment. All right, so as I mentioned, this final portion of the training concerns ethics and conflicts of interest. In general, as an overview, trustees are fiduciaries of the State Bar, and they have a duty to act ethically and consistent with fiduciary duties. These are some broad duties. Trustees must conduct themselves ethically, honestly, with integrity in all dealings related to the State Bar. They're fiduciaries who must exercise disinterested skill and undivided loyalty to the State Bar and their work as trustees, and that involves acting for the common good of all Californians and not for any private or personal interest when you're making decisions as trustees. Additionally, you should not use State Bar resources for private gain or any political or personal purposes, and you must avoid acting under any conflicts of interest. A conflict of interest occurs at any time a government official or employee make a decision that is impacted or appears to be impacted by personal or private considerations of that official or employee. Government officials and employees owe a paramount duty of loyalty to the public and their performance of their public duties. Each trustee is responsible for disqualifying or accusing, same concept, we use them interchangeably, but for disqualifying or accusing themselves from participating in the decision where they have a conflict of interest. So, it's your responsibility, but we are available as a resource to advise you on any questions. And if we see a potential conflict based on what we know, we will remind you and advise you of that. But ultimately, it's your responsibility. So, there are two primary types of conflicts of interest that exist and that we're concerned with. First are financial conflicts, and those occur when a trustee participates in a decision that has reasonably foreseeable impact on the trustee's financial interests. So, if you make a decision, it's going to have a financial impact on the source of your income, on investment that you hold, or on a source of gifts that you hold. And your financial interests of your dependent children and spouse or registered domestic partner are also considered your financial interest for the purpose of financial conflicts. Additionally, you need to avoid personal conflicts. Those occur where you participate in a decision where you have a personal interest that may prevent you from applying disinterested skill and loyalty to the public in making that decision. This concept incurs, includes the appearances of a conflict. In other words, you have a personal conflict where a reasonable person aware of the facts would perceive there to be a conflict. So, even if you think you could still be impartial, if, if you have an interest in the, in the decision, it's going to directly impact a family member or your friend, for instance, then a conflict exists there because a reasonable person would think there was a conflict, even if you subjectively believe that you could nonetheless be impartial. Why is avoiding conflicts of interest important? Well, first of all, public officials are held to high standards of ethical conduct, and public trust is essential for an agency such as the State Bar to perform its public service. The State Bar's public protection mission cannot be served if its decisions are made or are perceived to be made based in any part on the financial or personal interest of an official rather than on the public interest. Nor can that mission be served if the public does not believe the State Bar to be impartial. These principles have been reflected in the common law of California for decades, if not more. And just wanted to quote briefly a case from 1920, 1928. "A public officer is impliedly bound to exercise the powers conferred on him with disinterested skill, zeal, and diligence, and primarily for the benefit of the public. Actual injury is not the principle the law proceeds on. Fidelity and agent is what is aimed at, and as a means of securing it, the law will not permit an official to place him or herself, let's say, in a position in which they may be tempted by their own private interests to disregard those of their principle, that is, the public." And I think the important concept here is that actual industry, injury is not the principle the law proceeds on. Even if you're going to make a good decision or the same decision you would have made without regard to a conflict of interest, that doesn't matter. We don't want you making decisions if there is a conflict of interest. Some sources of authority for these conflict of interest principles we are discussing are the Political Reform Act, Government Code Section 1090, which precludes decision-making where there's, with respect to contracts where there is a conflict, the State Bar Act, in particular Business and Professions Code 6036, which is the specific recusal provision for trustees and State Bar employees, conflicts of interest. Additionally, the Conflict of Interest Code for trustees of the State Bar of California, and finally, State Bar Rule 2201, which requires trustees and other State Bar officials to fill out a list of attorneys with whom they have relationships so that conflicts can be avoided in the disciplinary First, we'll discuss a bit more financial conflicts, and these are addressed in Business and Professions Code, Section 6036A, and the Conflict of Interest Code. "You must disqualify yourself from making, participating in the making of, or attempting to influence any State Bar decision that will have a reasonably foreseeable material effect distinct from its effect on the public generally, on your financial interests." The financial interests that are at issue here are the same financial interests that you disclose in your Form 700. Sources of income and gifts, indirect or direct investments in business entities, your other investments like single stocks, and your real property. And again, the financial interests we're concerned with include the financial interests of your spouse or registered domestic partners, as well as any dependent children. Now, you only need to recuse yourself where there's going to be a material impact from a State Bar decision on your financial interests. That's a fact-intensive inquiry. So, if you have any financial interest that might be affected by a State Bar decision at all, well, we encourage you to consult with us, the Office of General Counsel, to determine whether it's a material impact such that your resignation, excuse me, your recusal would be required. Finally, I wanted to note that you're only required to recuse yourself where the effect on your financial interests is distinguishable from the effect on the public generally. And that requirement means, for instance, that trustees who are licensees, who are attorneys, do not generally have a financial conflict based on a decision that affects all licensees equally. So, for instance, when we vote on, you know, the annual changes or the requests for changes to the fee that we are authorized by the legislature to charge to all licensees, because, you know, the impact on licensee trustees is not distinguishable from the effect on all attorneys in California, there's no conflict with respect to that sort of decision. Personal conflicts are defined in Business and Professions Code, Section 6036B, and are also referenced in the preface to the Conflict of Interest Code. "You must disqualify yourself from making, participating in the making of, or attempting to influence any decision where there exists a personal interest that may prevent you from applying disinterested skill and undivided loyalty to the State Bar in making or participating in the making of decisions." The statute was recently amended to extend to perceived conflicts. The statute used to say, you don't only need to disqualify yourself where there was a personal interest that will prevent you from applying disinterested skill and undivided loyalty to the State Bar. And consistent with common law, the legislature, at our request, changed that to "may." So, it's now broader. So, it doesn't matter, again, whether you think, oh, it's okay, this won't, I can still, you know, in this particular instance, apply disinterested skill and loyalty. No, the inquiry is whether it may, whether a reasonable person looking at this would say, hey, that looks like a conflict. So, again, even if a trustee believes they can apply disinterested skill and undivided loyalty despite the existence of a personal interest, they have a conflict if it would appear to a reasonable person that the interest would prevent the trustee from applying, this is, can't say that word, disinterested skill and undivided loyalty to the State Bar. I also wanted to note that a personal conflict could be triggered for financial reasons. For instance, a trustee could have a disqualifying personal conflict based on the financial effect of a State Bar decision on a close friend or a relative. You know, specifically, if the State Bar were considering entering a contract that would, you know, generate income for the best friend or the adult brother of a trustee, that wouldn't be a financial conflict under 6036A because the trustee themselves doesn't have a financial interest in the finances of their adult brother or their best friend. We only impute, you know, under 6036A, the finances of your, your actual household. However, it should be, you know, apparent and not surprising that you, sitting there as a trustee, do have a personal interest in a decision that would cause a windfall for your best friend or your brother. So, this personal conflicts concept is a little bit broader and perhaps harder to define, but it can also be triggered by financial effects of decisions that wouldn't themselves meet the more technical definitions of, of a financial conflict under 6036A. A little bit more on personal conflicts. A trustee likely had the disqualifying personal interest in a State Bar decision if it would have an impact, again, distinct from the impact on the public generally, on the trustee or any person with whom the trustee has or in the previous 12 months has had a personal, a professional relationship. A trustee has a personal relationship with a person if the person and the trustee are relatives. In the Conflict of Interest Code, you know, defines relatives, but generally, it extends as far as your first cousins, and it includes step and foster and adoptive relationships and in-law relationships, your brothers, your primary in-laws, your brothers-in-law, sisters-in-law, your fathers-in-law, or mothers-in-law are all considered your relatives. Additionally, you are considered to have a personal relationship with any relationship that's of a nature that could be perceived by a reasonable person as personal and potentially affecting the trustee's ability to act impartially with respect to the person. So, you know, again, even though a third cousin is not considered a relative, you might nonetheless have a personal relationship with them if you're very close, you know, see each other frequently. Again, it's a, it's a, it's a broad concept, and we use the reasonable personal, person, reasonable person standard. An impact triggering, triggering a personal conflict could either be a financial or other benefit or burden on yourself or a person close to you. A trustee likely has a professional relationship with a person if the trustee is currently or within the previous 12 months, an employer or coworker of a person, represents or is a member of an entity that represents the person, is represented by the person or an entity in which the person is a member, or has another relationship of a nature that could be perceived by a reasonable person as professional and potentially affecting the individual, individual's ability to act impartially with respect to the person. So, again, it's a reasonable personal, person standard. There's not, you know, a very tight and precise definition, but again, we're looking at, you know, your existing or within the previous 12 months, personal and professional relationships. Also, and this is one that we keep an eye on, as, as, you know, we, we review the contracts that go before the Board of Trustees, but covered individuals, which includes trustees and employees of the State Bar, shall not be financially interested in any contract made by them in their official capacity or by any body or board of which they are members. If one trustee has a financial interest in a contract, the State Bar cannot enter into the contract. So, that's why we are very careful, you know, to ensure that we're not, you know, unless an exception implies, entering into contracts with, you know, your employers, for instance, in entities with which you have financial interest, and we, you know, encourage you, every meeting where there is the consent item for approval of contracts to, you know, be sure and, and look at those entities that we're contracting with and make sure that you don't have any relationships with them, investments in them, income from them, and that you, you know, be sure to reach out to us if you, if you do or if there's a question. Preventing contract-related conflicts depends on, in part, on full disclosure of your financial interests, again, primarily through your Form 700s. So, in addition to, you know, informing the public, those Form 700s sort of help identify, you know, the universe of your potential conflicts so that, you know, if something's listed on there, we're going to be sure to do the analysis before the State Bar would enter into any contract with an entity listed on your Form 700s. That's another use of the Form 700s. The violation of conflict of interest laws and policies can carry serious consequences. There can be personal fines, you know, ranging from the $10 for, for late filings of the Form 700 rules, on up to $5,000 or other fines that the FPTC can levy for, you know, violations of, of conflict of interest rules. For our, there can be professional discipline, for instance, for our attorney licensees, if they are found to have violated conflict of interest laws. You could be disqualified from holding public office and even face criminal sanction for serious and intentional violations. Finally, there is reputational harm to the trustee and the State Bar for violations. For conflicts of interest involving contracts, a result could be invalidation of those contracts. And finally, for violation of conflict of interest laws or any of these policies, a trustee could be admonished, sanctioned, or censured by the board under the procedures set forth in the Board of Trustees Policy Manual, and that we'll discuss briefly here today. Gifts have been touched on. They are something that you need to report on a Form 700. They are a, sources of gifts are a financial interest. And a gift, again, is a payment or other benefit that confers personal benefit where you do not provide equal value in return. The definition of gift is subject to various exceptions, including some of the most frequently applicable are gifts from close family members and reciprocal exchanges of gifts of similar value on birthdays and holidays. So, gifts that fall into those categories are not reportable, not considered gifts for purposes of, of reporting and disclosure for financial interest. Again, however, if you have a close family member or close relative or close friend who you are in the habit of exchanging gifts with, even if that gift's not reportable, you would likely have a personal conflict in a decision affecting that person. Gifts aggregating $50 or more from sources in those three disclosure categories in your Conflict of Interest Code must be reported on your Form 700, and you may not receive or accept gifts of $590 or more in a year from a source in the disclosure categories listed in the Conflict of Interest Code. And again, that $590 limit is subject to those same exceptions, for instance, gifts from close family members, reciprocal exchanges on, on birthdays and holidays. Additional prohibitions concern honoraria and loans. Trustees may not accept honoraria for speeches, articles, or vet attendance from a source that's reportable on your Form 700, and there is an exception for income earned in connection with customary services and a bona fide business trade or profession. So, again, if, if it is part of your profession, usual course of business to be giving speeches, you don't need to, paid speeches, discontinue doing so just by virtue of becoming a trustee. This, this prohibition is aimed, again, at influence peddling or the appearance of influence peddling. Trustees also may not receive personal loans from any officer, employee, trustee, consultant, or contractor of the State Bar. There's an exception for commercial loans and credit card transactions, so long as they're made in the lender's regular course of business on terms that are available to everybody, not just you, due to your status as a trustee. So, one way that we address and avoid conflicts is through disclosure. Potential sources of conflicts are disclosed through your Form 700 filings, and also, we identify potential conflicts through your filling out the Rule 2201 Conflict of Interest Code so that we can avoid conflicts in the discipline system. This increases transparency and helps to identify potential conflicts before they occur. It helps us think about the universe of conflicts that you might face in your decision-making. Where conflict does arise in your decision-making, you need to take steps to disqualify yourself. Business and Professions Code, Section 6036D sets forth a State Bar-specific disqualification and recusal process, and that's also listed verbatim in the preface to the Conflict of Interest Code. Where you think a conflict exists or may exist, you should not participate in the matter or any discussion or decision relating to it, or try to influence any decisions. So, first, if this happens in a public meeting, you disclose that you have a financial or personal interest at that meeting where it's considered. You don't need to say what the interest is, you just need to say, I have a financial interest, and for that reason, I'm disqualifying or recusing myself. I have a personal interest, and for that reason, I'm just, just recusing myself from this decision. You must then with, follow through and withdraw from any participation in the matter. Don't participate in discussion. Refrain from attempting to influence another trustee or staff who's participating in that decision, and finally, refrain from voting.
May I ask a question on this one?
Sure.
Because I've done differently in the past. Sometimes, and this is in the past, the person has been asked to leave the room during the discussion, which I always thought was a little extreme. But what is your view on, because that's not addressed in what, what you just put up. What's your view on this?
So, you know, we've, we've, this year really drilled down on, on what these specific requirements are, and for certain known as statutory filers, which are not trustees, but certain elected officials in, you know, their government meetings, there is a leaving the room requirement. But Business and Professions Code 6036D, which is specific to the State Bar, does not require that. We have in the past had, had, you know, trustees who are more comfortable with the, with the other approach. Certainly, with our hybrid meetings, it's logistically sometimes more challenging, and our advice is now that you do not need to, provided that you do not participate in the discussion.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
I would just add that obviously, if it's a closed session discussion where someone is, you know, conflicted, then that individual would need to leave the room.
Understood.
We also have, and this is set forth in the Board Book, a process of, for disqualification of a trustee by the board where the trustee themselves declines to recuse themselves. So, again, as I mentioned, trustees are responsible for determining if they have a disqualifying conflict and to disqualify themselves. However, if facts indicating the existence of a conflict are brought to the Office of General Counsel's attention, and the Office of General Counsel advises disqualification, trustees are generally expected to comply with that advice. If they don't, the General Counsel will inform the board as appropriate, whether the, the chair, the vice chair, or if they are impacted, the chair of the Audit Committee, the details are set forth in the Board of Trustees Policy Manual. But as appropriate, the board or board leadership will be informed, and then any trustee may move to preclude the trustee from participation in that decision. The impacted trustee and the General Counsel may then speak on that motion, and if, then a vote will be held on whether the impacted trustee should be excluded from participating in the discussion and vote. Trustee who's impacted may not vote on that motion, and assuming that, if the vote passes, then the trustee will not be allowed to participate in the discussion or vote. So, again, this is something that has not happened before, but, but this provides an opportunity and a mechanism for the board essentially to protect the integrity of its decision-making process in the unlikely event that a trustee chooses not to follow advice to accuse themselves. And relatedly, the Board Policy Trust, the Board Policy Manual now sets forth a number of enforcement actions that the board could take if a trustee is accused of violating ethics or conflicts of interest laws or regulations, including, for instance, failure to accuse themselves. All of these procedures include notice and an opportunity to be heard by the impacted trustees with greater process provided for more severe actions. Allegations of any misconduct or impropriety should be made to the chair and/or the vice chair, or if the chair or vice chair is subject, is the subject of the allegation to the executive director and/or the general counsel. The executive director and/or general counsel will then be notified and take appropriate steps to review, investigate, and recommend a course of action to the board. The board could then take a number of actions. Number one, it could take no action upon its determination. There was not, in fact, a violation of any uh... Number one, it could take no action upon its determination there was not in fact a violation of any conflict of interest law or regulation. And then in order of severity, the board could issue an admonishment. Admonition is the least severe enforcement mechanism available to the board. And is typically actually directed to all trustees rather than singling out a specific trustee. And it's just really a statement reminding them that a particular type of conduct is in violation of applicable law or regulations. The next most serious is a sanction. And that's directed to a particular trustee based on particular conduct determined to be in violation of applicable law or regulations. But is not considered punishment and is used would be used where a violation was considered perhaps less serious or perhaps less intentional. And finally, the most serious is a censure. That's the most severe form of action available to the Board of Trustees. It's used for serious offenses. And it may be combined with a loss of committee assignments. Or with referral to the impacted trustee's appointing authority, along with the recommendation that that appointing authority remove the trustee for cause. Now, unlike the other two, all of these would involve notice to the impacted board member and an opportunity to respond. But if censure is going to be on the table, there needs to be a separately noticed hearing or meeting of the board. So it's it's not going to happen all at once, and there will be opportunity at the censure hearing for the trustee to speak, present evidence, and in fact be represented by counsel. So there's an extra step of process involved in censuring a trustee because of the more serious nature of the decision. And so finally, an overview on how we identify potential conflicts. As we've mentioned a few times, it is each trustee's responsibility to follow ethics and conflicts of interest laws and regulations. The liability for violations ultimately falls on trustees as individuals that finds a potential disqualification from from office and even criminal sanctions. Best practice is for trustees to review all agenda items in advance of meetings. And consider whether they have connections to the individuals or entities who are mentioned in those items. Or who would likely be affected by a decision on the item. That's a central step in determining whether you may have a disqualifying conflict. And finally, the Office of General Counsel is available to provide information and advice. We recommend that trustees meet with OGC shortly after taking office to discuss potential sources of conflicts. And we also encourage trustees to contact us to discuss any changed circumstances that could give rise to conflicts. Examples of these include when you have a new employer, a new position, or new responsibilities in your job. When you have a new membership or a new leadership role in a professional association or nonprofit, or other new volunteer roles or activities. As well as instances in which a person or entity with whom you have a personal or professional relationship is involved in state bar business or proceedings in any way. As we've now mentioned several times, we at OGC are available to discuss and advise on any ethics or conflict related questions or concerns. We encourage you to contact both Eileen and I, or just Eileen if you're more comfortable with that. The FPPC provides useful resources on conflicts related issues. Stephen's presentation included links to to those resources pertaining to the Form 700. And these are two additional fact sheets and pamphlets dealing with a conflict of interest overview. And there's a very helpful fact sheet on gifts, honoraria, travel, and loans. That one, I mentioned that there are a number of of exceptions to gifts. And the two I mentioned were gifts from relatives and reciprocal exchanges on holidays and other occasions. But there are over a dozen exceptions, so they're all discussed there on that Gifts Honoraria, Travel, and Loans Fact Sheet. And finally, Section 11 of the Board of Trustees Policy Manual provides an overview of ethics and conflicts issues. And with that, we will open it for your questions.
Great. Thank you, Brady. Any questions? Trustee Tony.
Could you go back to page 23, please?
Yes.
Why you didn't have to say, this is an outstanding presentation. This is the kind of presentation I've been, you know, asking for for a while. And it has really come off well. I really appreciate it. So what I really like about this page is the, you know, you know, saying that potential conflict is not only with personal or professional relationships involved in state bar business. But also talks about employers, your position at the employer responsibilities. I'm bringing this up because, you know, I know myself, I'm very conscious that I'm Executive Director of an organization that employs attorneys. And I consult regularly with the Office of General Counsel when we're doing fundraising. Okay, to make sure that there isn't a conflict of interest of who I raise money from. I'm particularly concerned if I see their name as having a contract. I consult. I do that. It's not, I have a personal, but they're my, and I'm the Executive Director of that employer. Okay, so it's not just, you know, so I think I really like that. Now I'm going to ask you to go to page 10, please. And and I think what'd be useful in this whole section, this is just the beginning of a section. I and maybe it's a little, go to the next one. There's one where it's talking about. Okay, yes, yes, this is actually the one. Thank you. It would be really useful to make a reference to employer in this, on this one. Just just to be clear and to be consistent with what you have on page 23. That I just like consistency, and I think it would be helpful to people because I think it's useful to do. I mean, I do it. I think I should do it, but just a little bit more. A lot of these just isn't as as clear. It's the employer of the person, but what about your own employer?
Okay.
That's what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
So it's not just a person, it's an employer. I don't know, but you get my point, I think.
Yep.
Get more clear.
Oh, yes, trustee Chen.
Thank you for this presentation. It's very helpful. I have a clarifying question that pertains to something on slide 15. Which concerns gifts.
Okay.
I understand that the first several bullet points go to disclosures, and I want to make sure I understand the last bullet point. Is that an outright prohibition regardless of disclosing or not? So you may not receive any gift in this amount, even if you disclose it.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. And what's the source of this rule, just so I can make sure I read it and review it?
That is in the Conflict of Interest Code itself. I can email you separately with the with the section number, but but and then within the Political Reform Act, it's a required provision of the Conflict of Interest Code. So that's, you know, it all comes from the FPPC Regulation 18730 is our Conflict of Interest Code, and the PRA provides the terms.
Helpful. Thank you.
Can I piggyback on that just a little bit? Because it was my understanding that, and maybe this rule has changed. But if you received a gift in that amount and you paid it back within a with a within like a 30 day period, it no longer.
That's correct. There is a there's a provision for either returning it or even donating it to charity within within a 30 day period. Then it's not considered a gift here.
That's right. Okay. So you can receive the gift, it's just as long as you dispense with it in one of those. That's right.
And donating to a charitable organization, you won't be, you know, you cannot take tax credits for it, so it's just you're giving it away.
And trustee Chen, it's within the Conflict of Interest Code. It's Section 8.1, and that's at pages nine and nine going into 10 of the of the Conflict of Interest Code.
Great. Thank you.
Trustee, good.
Good. Yes.
Thanks, Brady. And thanks for this excellent presentation and answering all of my questions about a year ago when I first joined the board. So one question I had is since the critical question in terms of disclosure of investments. Are companies that do business with the state bar, is there a list?
Yeah, companies of the type that do business with the state.
Okay, of the type that do business with the state bar.
Right.
Is there a list of industries or companies that we can look at? In terms of deciding whether or not we need to disclose an investment or not. And I think I way over disclosed last year, which is better than under disclosing. But, you know, I was just wondering what what guidance there might be there for us.
Sure. So Category 3, and it's a non exhaustive list, has A through K, so something like 13 or so categories of industries that that are of the type. So legal services, legal publications, vendors of office space, office equipment, those sorts of things. Travel agencies, hotels, travel providers, insurance companies, banks, and financial institutions. IT vendors, real estate brokerage firms. Consulting rehabilitation and educational treatment on substance abuse because of our lap work contracts. Public relations and media management consultants, and employee benefit providers and administrators of employee benefits. Personnel consulting services and employment agencies, so the types that are HR contracts.
Thank you.
I may add, as the presentation was ongoing, I thought that it might be helpful to have some sort of a guidance on the types of services. We do not purchase like medical supplies, biotech, et cetera. So what we could do is, before your filing deadline, we could work on developing some kind of a list of that would be helpful to, like an FAQ or resource guide for you, and for our staff as well.
Any other questions? All right. Seeing none. Brady, thank you so much. Eileen, thank you to you and your office for always being available for trustees and for the fun questions that we might come up with after this training.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brady.
All right, we're going to take a half an hour break. We will come back into session at 12:30. And we'll be taking up the remainder of our agenda at that time. So we'll see you at 12:30.
All right, check, check, check. All right, welcome back to the afternoon session of the Friday meeting of the Board of Trustees. We are going to pick things up where we left off at item 707.4. We don't need to retake role, do we? Okay.
All right, so I realized about two hours ago that the corresponding actual written agenda item to go with this was not posted, and that is due to me daring to go outside of Luisa's process, and we see what happened. So there's a beautiful agenda item that was drafted that didn't get posted, so I will figure out another way to share that with you, but because of that, I'm gonna kind of toggle a little bit between a few things, so. So first, just as a bit of context, the state bar is statutorily required to have a strategic plan. And one thing that really impacted me early on at my tenure at the bar is our former board chair, Alan Steinbrecker. When I met with him, and I just asked him about the plan, he said, "Let's just say that the strategic plan does not live loudly within me." And that was his way of basically saying like, "We don't really, you know, we do this thing once every few years, and it's on a shelf, and there we go." And I would have to say that would be the same reaction that staff had as well. It's something that we have to do, but it's not necessarily tied at all to our work. And so, we've worked really hard to change that dynamic, both at the board level and as a staff team. And so, you are now two years in to your 2022 to 2027 strategic plan, and this is an opportunity to give you an update on, you know, where we are. I want to share a little bit with you about the process that we use to actually track our progress on the plan. And then, I'm going to share some of my proposed strategic plan modifications and see if the board has any as well. So, the strategic plan itself is broken out into four buckets. Again, we don't have the agenda item posted, and I don't want to do too much toggling, but we are protecting the public through attorney discipline, increasing access, engaging our partners, and regulating the legal profession. For the first two years of the plan, those four buckets encompass 17 distinct implementation steps, and the steps are pretty broad. Of those 17, 10 are complete, so that's about a 60% completion rate. These are 17 that we should have completed. We've completed about 60% of them. The 17 steps have translated for us internally into 82 different operational projects. So, once the board adopted the plan, we went back as staff and we developed operational plans. How are we going to actually execute the broad objectives outlined in the strategic plan? And we have two different versions of the operational plan. One that ties very explicitly to your strategic plan, and another that is called core operational that deals with more of the backbone infrastructure work needed to actually achieve strategic objectives. So as I said, today, we're going to ask you to consider strategic plan amendments and share with you progress. So before I go any further, I'm gonna ask Luisa to now jump to the operational plans, just so you can see what that looks like and how they line up to the strategic plan. Yeah, but we need the attachment. Keep going. All right. So here, for example, this is goal one. Goal one is protecting the public through strengthening the attorney discipline system. The strategies and the implementation steps are in the posted strategic plan. That is what the board adopted. Over where you see operational activities, you see everything that we've said we are going to do to effectuate that implementation step. These were all presented to you in January of last year. Basically, you adopted a plan, we went back internally and said, "What are we going to do to implement that plan?" This is the strategic portion of the operational plan. And then, there is another, as I said, core operational that talks about things like rolling out our values, our organizational values, working on our IT infrastructure, not a surprise, things of that nature. So, when I'm reporting to you on progress, I'm really talking to you about the progress that we've made at that operational level, because that's how we have sort of manifested the plan internally into something that we can actually track and see how we're doing. So I just wanted to give you a visual on that, and then if you could go to the dashboard. So this is something that you are never going to see yourselves at the board level, but just to give you another sense of how we are tracking this internally. Each of the offices that's responsible for achieving one of those operational objectives is required to, on a quarterly or semi-annual basis, provide an update, ultimately to me, on where they are on those objectives. And we're tracking it all in smart sheet format. So if you click on "See Detail," Luisa. You can see here all of the activities, operational projects, their status, and their deadline. So really, this is just to give you a sense, I hope some confidence, that one, we are actively working your strategic plan, and two, there's a lot of accountability built into this process to make sure that things get done. And when we're going to talk a little bit later about potential modifications to the plan, that's really a question of, is there anything that the board wants us to focus on that could not be effectively captured by the framework we already have in place? So right now, we've got strategic plan, implementation steps. If the board wants to add a new operational activity, that's fine, you don't need to modify the strategic plan, but if you want a new implementation step, that's where we would need to actually make plan modifications. So we could go back to the VISME. Thank you. So just, I want to take a moment to go over some of the highlights of what we have done over the last two years. Developed new discipline case processing standards. Those are the SB 211 case processing standards, near and dear to your hearts, those of you that have been on the board for some time. When we talked yesterday during our discussion about the fee increase request, we talked about a specific component of that request being the staffing need associated with implementing those case processing standards. So the case processing standards developed pursuant to the plan, and now, fast forward, how many staff do we need to implement those standards? The board took action on the ad hoc commission on the discipline system, those recommendations. That commission and the recommendations and its work took a long time to percolate to the board, but finally, last year, all of the recommendations came forward, the board took action on all of them. With respect to several, you asked for more workup and for us to come back, and you will start seeing that as early as your March meeting. One item we discussed yesterday, that is attorney representation in the discipline system, an appointed counsel program for attorneys who are unrepresented in the discipline system, because in our study of racial disparities in the discipline system, we found that one of the key drivers for disciplinary outcomes was the lack of representation. So again, that stems back to strategic plan objective. Something you haven't had a lot of visibility to, but I wanted to include it here because of our discussion, not really because of our discussion yesterday, this was posted before that, but it's relevant to a discussion about how we are trying to be a more efficient organization without additional resources. We have reduced the time to payout in our client security fund. So the client security fund is the equivalent of a victim's restitution program in the state bar context, and we've had historically a very long time to payout, over a year. This means the time between when someone is eligible to receive the payout and when they actually get that payout. We've reduced it by 40% over the course of this plan, and we were able to do that really through business process reengineering and changing our processes, not by spending more money. So that's an example of one, not necessarily going to come to you, but I think it's certainly a success. We launched the Public Trust Liaison Public Trust Liaison. That is the state bar's version of an ombuds person. This was huge. I would consider this one of the major reforms that we implemented in response to Girardi and having more of a vehicle for people to address their concerns about the state bar. And this year, in March, the Audit Committee will be receiving the first annual report on the work of the Public Trust Liaison, including the Public Trust Liaison's recommendations for any systematic changes that he thinks need to be made. And so, that is new and something exciting that was done in this portion of the plan period. We also launched the Client Trust Account Protection Program. You guys have heard us talking about this, CTAP, another initiative that sprang from Girardi and the work of a special board committee designed to come up with responses to Girardi. This is, for the first time, the state bar proactively regulating attorney-client trust accounts. And we know now, for example, the amount of client funds on deposit in the state, $14 billion. When we discussed legislative priorities yesterday, you heard that part of that package includes seeking a requirement that banks report all of the client trust account information that they have to us. Right now, we are reliant for about half of our accounts solely on what attorneys report to us, and we imagine that there's underreporting. So, that $14 billion is probably too low. And when we go and try to require banks to give us the information as part of this legislative cycle, we'll see how much we actually have on deposit, but that $14 billion is quite staggering in and of itself. We also launched the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Leadership Seal for legal employers. This is a state bar leadership seal certification program that all legal employers in the state are eligible to apply for. This is actualizing our commitment to DEI and its embedded nature in our strategic goals. The state bar itself applied to achieve a seal status in the first round. We did not get it. We were aspiring. I don't want to publicly report something that's not public yet, but we'll have good news to share on that front soon. So, we're entering into the second year of the leadership program. We have nearly 100 legal employers in the state participating in that. During this plan period, you also advanced to the court the recommendations of the Blue Ribbon Commission on the bar exam. Those recommendations included, one, that the state bar develop its own California exam, moving away from the National Conference of Bar Examiners and the multi-state bar exam. If the court asks to approve or authorize the development of a California exam, this will be a sea change for us in this state. It'll be a tremendous amount of work for us as a staff team and probably for the admissions liaisons to the board. And this is separate and apart from the more recent submission you authorized on the portfolio bar exam. This is a non-traditional bar exam, alternative pathway to licensure. So, got two important items pending with the California Supreme Court. Also, in the admissions space, we published our first comprehensive report on the performance of all three types of California law schools. We are unique in the country in the number of pathways we offer to licensure, including ABA accredited schools, California accredited schools, and California registered schools. I've hinted to you at several meetings now that I think this year will be an important year for you in the admissions space, in part because of the results that are reflected in that report, which show very disparate performance outcomes by these three school types. And part of your charge as a public protection entity and a consumer protection one is, at what point is a school of opportunity sort of becoming just an opportunity to pay tuition without any promise of ever passing the bar exam? And so, those are some questions that will come forward to you this year, and the data that's going to support that discussion in part is reflected in this report that we published. This year, the board, or not this year, over the plan period, you also adopted new public comment guidelines, and really want to thank trustee Tony in particular for spearheading that. We, I think, are ahead of many state and local governments in terms of the breadth and nature of our public comment guidelines, how inclusive we are for both those that come in person, as you can see, we don't have much in-person public comment, and who are participating remotely. And we have shared our great work with legislators who have worked on the issue of sort of what to do post-pandemic in terms of returning to in-person or remaining in remote meeting settings. We've shared it, including the stats that we keep on participation. So, that's another sort of great achievement over this plan period. We've increased technical assistance and training for licensees, particularly in the area of client trust accounts. One of the objectives of your strategic plan is that we become known as a resource for licensees. One, they know who we are, and two, it's not, doesn't always need to be kind of a negative engagement, but rather, the state bar is an asset for you. So, through the Client Trust Account Protection Program, we have done a tremendous amount of outreach directly to licensees and through our affinity bars to say, "We want to help you be compliant with these rules. We are not, it's not a gotcha game, and here's how we can support." And then, the last thing I wanted to highlight for you, this is also something that's going to come to you this year. We are doing better on increasing our collection of outstanding debt. The state bar, I can't even unfortunately give you an accurate number of how many millions of dollars is owed to us, but I'm going to tell you, it's well in excess of $100 million in outstanding debt by folks who have participated, primarily by people who have been engaged in the discipline system. A lot of that debt, just like any of you familiar with the trial court space, is considered uncollectible. We're not going to get it, but that is no excuse for not having a robust collections program. So, a couple of years ago, we effectuated necessary statutory changes to participate in the FTB, what is it called? The FTB Tax Interface? Intercept, yes. Tax Intercept and two of FTB's programs, one that does tax intercept and one which actually sweeps money from your paychecks or bank accounts. So, we have the ability to do that. And in order to take advantage of that ability, we've needed to be able to send the FTB clean debt files. Going back to our discussion yesterday about IT challenges, I will just say, it's been a tremendous challenge to send the Franchise Tax Board clean debt files, but we've made a significant amount of progress over this plan period, and we will be updating the board on these collections issues a little bit later this year. So, those are just some of the highlights I wanted to accomplish. I mean, not accomplish, I wanted to highlight, accomplishments to highlight. Yep. Right, because you'll remember that one of the other issues that the ad hoc commission identified was, there's two main sources of this debt. One is fees that we assess to respondents who are, have the benefit of participating in our attorney discipline system. And that is an issue that the ad hoc commission has addressed, and you will be getting recommendations to revise our fee structure, because we charge more than any other state in the United States for discipline costs. But the other is reimbursements for client security fund payouts. So, when I mentioned we have a victim's restitution fund equivalent in California, the respondent is liable for the amount of that payout. The maximum per individual payout is $100,000, but an attorney may find him or herself with, you know, $500,000 in debt owed to the state bar because five individuals have received that $100,000 payout. So, that's the primary source of the debt that's owed to the bar. And that, those are the sources primarily. Any other questions on any of the things I've mentioned so far? Because now, I'm just going to go into kind of staff recommended modifications to the plan. No? Okay. So, I'm asking, and this is looking ahead for the remainder of the plan, that we reduce the total number of implementation steps listed from 50 to 45. And then, I'm asking for sort of non-substantive language edits. These are all listed here and in the deck that was posted. I'm not planning on going through them individually, because they, again, were all provided to you, and the basis for the change is articulated. Mostly, it's to condense activities that, you know, we might have had two or even three planned steps that were redundant or repetitive, and we're trying to make more sense of it. So, that's the primary basis for this consolidation. And then, in terms of the language edits, also similarly, I've provided sort of the basis for why I'm asking for this edit, to clarify who's responsible or what we're actually going to do. So, happy to go through these in detail if anyone wants me to. I did want to tee up. One thing I noticed is missing, and I was thinking about this in relation to the conversation we had yesterday about the discipline monitor, and maybe the independent board secretary as well. Our plan is very outwardly focused in a way. We don't, for example, have a natural home for something like strengthen the board's ability to exercise oversight, period. We might have a way to do that in the discipline system goal, but not writ large. And so, that is something you might want to consider if you want an implementation step or a modification of a goal, so that it more explicitly talked about your working to strengthen your oversight capacity. So, when we think about moving forward with the discipline monitor or some changes to allow you, for example, to set board agendas, I'm not so sure the existing plan naturally accommodates that. But I'll just pause there. See if anybody has any thoughts, or you wanted me to go through any of these modifications in more detail.
Any comments or questions in that area? Yes, trustee Barhona.
Just one question, Leah. Do these revised implementation steps take into account some of the decisions you said that would increase workload a lot? You refer to it that are with the courts right now? And I'm just, I just want to zoom out really quickly and say, if that is going to be an extensive amount of work, my hope would be to see less on these pages, given the amount of workload that is likely to increase. I guess, just like, if we zoom out, I just wanted to make sure, just to acknowledge that these are great, and certainly would want to move them forward, so that, but do they take into account these other kind of key decisions that are going to be made and come down the pike?
The strategic plan as it's written does take into account some. Certainly, it takes into account potential changes to the bar exam, and that work is, you know, it's pending a decision by the Supreme Court, and we don't know exactly when that's going to happen. I think it's a fair question, I would say. I think for now, the plan does, is broad enough to encompass those particular initiatives. The one area, like I said, that I think it doesn't necessarily touch upon is board oversight. That's an area that seems to be missing from the plan. It's interesting, given the amount of work and investment that's gone into that area over this last couple of years, think about our conflicts of interest training, for example, and all the work that's gone in in that space.
Anybody else have any comments? Trustee Swell?
I'm trying to, just to make sure, I just probably need you to explain this to me a little bit more, Leah, in this regard. How do we take into consideration what we heard yesterday from the staff survey also about information technology and the information technology upgrade sort of needs? I know that's embedded in here, but how is it, one, embedded in here, and two, is there, I saw on the agenda item, which we don't have, that there was, there are deadlines, and I'm just wondering whether or not there needs to be any sort of reprioritization of any of those deadlines around any of that?
Well, maybe while I'm talking, Luisa, you could go back to the agenda item with the operational plans and pull up the core operational plan as opposed to the strategic. So, I have a couple of thoughts there. We do have a core operational plan now that has never, the operational plans haven't come to you for approval. That is a sort of an implementation activity based on your strategic work. We, as I mentioned, we have one that's very internally focused, it's very IT-heavy as it is right now. That being said, what we talked about yesterday was the need for additional investment. Right now, we don't have that investment, and so, the plan we have now reflects the resources that we have available to us now. I'm not sure it would make sense for us to modify and add sort of ambitious objectives in the IT space, when we don't have any funding to do it. So, this is the, what Luisa has up right now is the core operational plan. If you can scroll up, up to the top. Okay. Scroll down, the tables. So, we have investing in our peoples, where you see things like our values and recruiting talent, keep going. Developing talent, retaining talent, keep going. DEI, walking the talk, different things there. Transparency and accountability, here, if you can scroll up. Here, you can just see, if you look, you'll see IT, IT, IT. That's in our current core operational plan, if you continue to scroll down. Ensuring compliance with different standards, you see a lot of IT there. Automation, you see different HR and IT things in that space. So, the contact center phone system is another one that's here that you saw at the finance committee in your budget request. So, we are working this operational plan now, and I think this is doable with the resources we have. I'm not sure we can add more IT without new money, if that makes sense, Arnie. But, but you're right, our actual strategic plan does not have kind of an IT component. It really is externally focused, as I said, a mission-focused, and it, I think it assumes that we're going to be taking care of all of this infrastructure stuff in order to achieve these mission-focused objectives, but it doesn't have like, you know, making sure you have a great talented staff. That's not in our strategic plan.
I mean, I for one would welcome that into the strategic plan. I think that where this is really, I think, come to lighter, where it's been presented to me in a new way, is just even talking about things that we could do to increase civility in California. There's an IT aspect of that that winded its way into the discussions, and whether or not that's doable, and how doable, and how many, you know, and then the resources of staff to do something what, from the outside, looks to be a very seemingly innocuous thing, but ends up being a much more complex animal. So, I think in today's technology-laden world, I think it absolutely makes sense to have IT be more of a focus from our, you know, from a strategic standpoint. And that way, when we go to stakeholders, then this is something that we can point to and say, "Here's, you know, here are the things that have come up. Here's operational efficiencies we've tried to implement to meet these strategic goals, but at the end of the day, we can't meet those without some sort of increase in funding." So, be able to point to, yes, we're going to make every step possible as efficient as possible, but in the reality of things, this technology world makes things exceedingly more complex. And it was even, just in going through Discipline Day, seeing the amount of steps that it takes staff to enter different data fields and data into different areas that we now track, you know, this is also an increase of employee time spent on various tasks that are then presented to the board and allow for us to exercise greater oversight. And so, I think it absolutely should be. And I'm just looking through our current strategic plan. And I'm just looking through our current strategic plan. And I think perhaps where it could fit is either on goal one, which is protecting the public by strengthening the attorney discipline system. There's an effectiveness, a consumer focus and a policy and systems change.
We're going to pull this up.
Okay. So I think there's natural overlap in that first goal. And then also natural overlap with goal two, which is the protecting the public by enhancing access to and inclusion in the legal system. So each one has a technology component. I think maybe it lives more loudly within goal one. And then to your point is as to the discipline monitor, I also see goal one, policy and systems change. We have a broad statement about align and implement recommendations of the special discipline case audit committee and the ad hoc commission on the discipline system. And I would certainly with yesterday's conversation kind of still ringing in my ears. Seems like there is a, the, the will of the board is to pursue, you know, perhaps that, that inspector general type position, at least to explore that, flesh it out. And then I think that might live in that policy and systems change bucket.
Okay. So is the board generally in agree? So there's different ways we could do this. We could modify implementation steps to more explicitly address or include IT related goals, board oversight related goals, the specific discipline monitor objective that we discussed yesterday. That's probably, it's an easier way to do it, and I like it because it doesn't mean that you're radically changing your plan. I mean, I think you want to avoid like radically changing your strategic plan. But another approach would be to add like a goal five that had, you know, an infrastructure focus. We don't necessarily need to decide it today, just some direction and I, we could bring it all back in March.
Anybody have any strong feelings input? Yes, trustee Tony.
I, I like the idea of adding a, a piece that focuses on technology. And it's, I, I think it's perfectly fine for a strategic plan to have both outward and inward facing components of it. There's nothing unusual about that. I think it's a good thing. And it also shows the value of doing this kind of review. As Leah said, not just putting it on the shelf and returning to it when the clock strikes five years, but of reviewing it and saying, how's it look now? Given the passage of a year. I think this is a very, I think this shows the value of what we're doing. And I, I certainly would support a modification that's based upon a realization and a feeling that yeah, this is a really high priority and that the, you know, the failure to address technology is really going to hurt our ability to do the work efficiently, to have the data efficiently organized. And in some ways it, it affects our bottom line. We're not collecting what we, what we could be. So I, I definitely support it's what I'm saying.
Yes, trustee Trejo.
I think, I think that, I think the technology piece has a lot of different component parts to it. I know certainly for me, I think a winnable goal would be able to make it so that our technology allows us to report more easily, right? Because I know we're constantly under scrutiny and reporting, being able to report accurately is probably a key feature in being able to do that, right? So I know there was talk earlier about AI and these things. And how we would use resources such as that. I mean, I'm not the person, I mean, I know a little bit about it, but getting to understand, especially in the legal community, the impact of AI, because I know it's impacted the way I use my attorneys, you know, and when I use them and these things. So maybe there is something, something in there that can help in, in our organization as well. I can't pinpoint how that would, what that is, but certainly dedicating ourselves to it would, would be an important thing in my view.
That's as perfect as a tee up for our final topic on this agenda as I could have asked for, which is you're about to get in, you're about to get a demo and have some conversation about legal tech AI. And we certainly have been trying to lean into that at the bar. But we can, yeah.
I was just, one of your earlier slides, Leah, you know, you talk about reducing the total number of implementation steps. And so I, I didn't, I'm wondering if, if part of this is trying to reduce some of those implementations, implementation steps. And so I don't know if that's a factor in, in how it is that we go about either adding a, adding a goal or, or whatnot.
Just reducing them because they are, you could put that up, Luisa, they are either confusing or we just found as we're really trying to work through it as staff that they're duplicative, they overlap. It's not just to sort of reduce to reduce. I, I think it's fine. I, I think what I would take from this conversation, and we were going to ask you to vote on these changes today, but I don't think we need to if we're going to come back. We will come back with a proposed kind of goal five that reflects this discussion today as well as these changes that, you know, I've already shared with you. And incorporating the discipline monitor position probably as in operational activity associated with one of the implementation steps. So you'll see that that's going to be tracked. If that works for people, then I.
I, I did want to give any other trustees an opportunity to bring up any other area of the strategic plan that you think might warrant further looking at, especially in light of, you know, the various reforms that we've discussed and voted on in the past, really the past day, past couple of meetings. But, you know, this is certainly not your, your last opportunity to talk about the strategic plan, but certainly a good opportunity to have staff work on, on anything that, that comes out. Yes, trustee Barhona.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, I would echo my colleagues on this and adding infrastructure. But really this is an, I think in a large part, an expense reduction strategy. And so for me, it's not actually IT, it's actually financial stability, right? And IT is sort of the conduit to that. And so I'm just some curiosity, given the steps we'll take to get to the, to the legislature and to be able to sort of name really clearly that there are really clear infrastructures that will allow us to become a financial, financially stable organization and that we are going to then have efficiencies. We've already had them given the report that's been provided. So thank you for your work there. But I'm curious if, if, you know, if there's a different, a different way, a different approach and, and the goal being become a, you know, financially solvent organization.
Yeah, you know what I'm thinking? That might not fully encompass some of the things that trustee Trejo was talking about, but we could have like goal five, protect the public through financial stability and accountability or something like that, because the accountability piece will get encompass that reporting. So we can play with that certainly.
All right. Great comment. Anybody else? All right, I know you're just really wanting to get to this AIP, so without further ado.
Yeah, let's turn it over to the team. I think everybody is doing this remote.
All right, so we're going to take up item seven zero eight. This is our artificial overview, artificial intelligence overview and training. I believe presenting on this, we have Erica Doherty from our, of our Rockstar lawyers. Oh, there she is. Good afternoon, Erica, how are you?
Hi, thank you, Sarah Solings. I appreciate, I lost audio for a minute, but I appreciate hearing Rockstar, so thank you so much. I will be very brief and just do a brief introduction of three speakers that are here for you today, and then I will close us out at the end. So as you are all hopefully and very likely aware, the rapid advancement of generative AI systems like ChatGPT and many others has sparked a global discussion around the need for new regulations and regulations that would have a really much broader applicability than, though certainly relate to the practice of law. So governments and the tech industry are grappling with the appropriate balance of regulation and innovation. You may have been following some of that that's going on at Davos right now. And some of the key consideration, considerations related to that include, you know, transparency, accountability, oh, I'm so sorry, productivity and others. Excuse me. One, many have predicted that legal services is one to be the most effective, one of the most affected sectors by developments in general AI and the commercial products. And lawyers are already utilizing generative AI or exploring how to use generative AI and working on generative AI product development. And there are some key players also shaping regulation of generative AI. And obviously, once there is regulation, there will be a lot of lawyers who are doing work to make sure that generative AI companies and products are in compliance with those regulations. So there are three speakers here today to discuss generative AI in much more detail, including in broad strokes, explaining how lawyers and law firms are starting to use and exploring the use of generative AI. And then also, as Leah mentioned, through a demo of a generative AI product, so you can actually see it in action. I will invite you to ask questions throughout their presentations. And like I said, I'll close us out just to remind the board of what they have already approved as it relates to the regulation of lawyer use of generative AI. So to kick us off is Josh Kubicki, who is a fractional strategy executive who advises and works directly with law firm and in-house leaders on business strategy, developing modern learning and development programs and on the pragmatic use of generative AI. Josh is an award winning legal professor who teaches entrepreneurship and the business of law. He's also a former executive officer in global law firms and a former member of an F500 in-house legal team. You also see Shannon Bales here, and Shannon is the manager of litigation support at Munger Tools, a legal tech adjunct at UCLA and Santa Ana College, and the vice chair of the lawyer practice management and tech community for the California Lawyers Association. Joining us in just a few minutes will be Dorna Moini, and she is the CEO and founder of Gavel, which is a no code platform for building document automation and client facing legal products. And prior to starting at Gavel, Dorna, or starting Gavel, excuse me, Dorna was a litigator at Sibley Austin. And there in her pro bono practice, she worked with legal aid organizations to build a web application for domestic violence survivors to complete and file their paperwork, which led to the idea for Gavel. Dorna is also on the Legal Services Corporation Emerging Leaders Council and a member of LAFLA's advisory board. She was named an ABA Legal Rebel and a Fast Case 50 honorary, and she also teaches legal innovate, at the Legal Innovations Lab at USC Law School. So with that, I will let Josh go ahead and get started and thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Hello, everybody. I believe I have met with some of you prior in a similar setting a few months ago. I just wanted to just take a moment and thank you for the guidance that you all put out. I'm not sure exactly how long ago it was, a few weeks or a couple of months. I live in this world, so my timeline is completely skewed. Things happen rapidly every day. But more guidance from other states to the profession is desperately needed. And I think this conversation today with me and others, hopefully will give you all some sense for, for where other or different types of guidance and/or regulation might be considered in this arena. Generally, when I do these talks, I have no idea what any one of you does with generative AI on a daily basis, a weekly basis or monthly. How many of you've used it? How many are, are experts or how many have completely ignored it? So bear with me as I just sort of set the table briefly again, and just reintroduce what this technology is and how it works. I'm going to keep this very simple and very basic and not turn us into a technical conversation. But anytime we start talking about this, it's useful just to revisit some of the core elements of this. I'm going to, I'm not going to show my presentation mode here, so because I'll be jumping around this deck. And please at any time interrupt me. This is not meant to be a lecture. I'm here as a resource to you all. I do not take offense if you interrupt me and redirect me. I want to make most use of your time. So just as a brief reminder for those, it's been a while since generative AI was released, and we have this phrase called large language models or LLMs. I just want to revisit again, before we go into this conversation, how this works at the most simplest level, because it is.
I'm sorry, Josh, but if you could put that in full screen mode.
Do you want me to? Yes.
Well, it's easier, I think, to see it because it's kind of.
Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that. So it's good just to remember how this works because there's a lot of current day issues that are anchored in, in this. So on the left-hand side, we can picture the internet, we can picture Wikipedia, the Library of Congress, whatever vast resource repository of data information that we know these models have ingested and quote unquote been trained on. And yes, there's lots of lawsuits right now over the legality, over the protection of all of that knowledge and information, and that's not where I'm going here. Where I'm going is what actually happens. These, these models and training, these don't quote unquote photocopy the information. It basically is parsing out words, actually something different called tokens. I'll give you a sense of what that is in a minute. It's parsing out these words. Okay, so it's not, like I said, photocopying a page so that when you ask it for something, it's just, it's just regurgitating the same context in which it ingested something. Something else is going on. And what is actually happening is this breaks words up into that word I call tokens. And you can think of it, the best way to conceptualize what a token is, it's not technically accurate, but a syllable. Okay, think of what your syllables are in words, that'll give you some context for what a token is, right? So if you think about that, that's actually, these models are breaking words up into smaller bits and parts. And then basically it's learning how often these tokens, these bits and parts, appear together in sequence and all that. That's the simplest thing that's happening here. What's not happening at all is a fundamental understanding or consciousness around what you and I are actually talking about with these models. Has no conception about what we're talking about. It's literally looking at the building blocks of language and how they sort of appear in relation to one another. Okay? I'm going to jump out of here real quick and jump ahead. So what this has created is a bunch of misconceptions over this. And, and these are dominant in the legal profession. And just to kind of give you some anecdotal evidence, so I teach, I have a course. It's taken by, at this point, over 700 legal professionals. From the most senior partners to the most junior associates to C-suite leaders to the most junior managers in law firms of all sizes. Judges have taken this course. It's very pragmatic. What I'm learning, and I talk to lawyers every day, is that still such a fraction of our profession is actually using this stuff. Put aside all the surveys that we're seeing from Thomson Reuters or the other legal publishers or the big consulting firms like Deloitte or PWC that put out these surveys that show all this massive adoption. In legal, anecdotally anyway, people have tried it, maybe, but most people are not using this technology in any way, shape or form today. That's a good or bad thing, depending on your perspective. It's bad because this technology isn't intuitive. I put in here that our misconception, it's not good. It gives us nonsensical replies. That has less to do with the capabilities of the technology and much more with the capabilities of the human that are interacting with it, the lawyers. We don't. We don't have a strong baseline for how to interact with these models. I'll give you another example or analogy. For any of you who are old enough like me to remember how we used to do legal research after books, but before how we currently do it, using Boolean search terms, if everyone remembers Boolean. It's like learning a different language completely. It was not intuitive at all with the connectors and all sort of the function commands and abbreviations. It took some time. And many of us relied on the Westlaw or Lexus research assistants. You'd call on the phone and they'd put the Boolean string together for you and voila, you'd get that. Okay, this technology appears to be very simple because of how it how it looks. Right? Look at Google on the left-hand side and look at ChatGPT on the right. This looks super simple. When we interact with this, oh, I know what to do, is our instinct. I'm just gonna put some stuff in that message box and voila, I'm off and running. Okay? That's not the case. We've learned that. Some lawyers have already learned through very, very bad judgment that that's not what we need to be doing here. There's this big gap. We're not thinking of having a conversation with this technology. We're thinking of as a search function, a oracle of truth, something that gives us facts, something that we can rely on to give us complete accuracy and precision. That's not what this technology is designed for, and that's certainly not where its capabilities are. So we have a huge education gap right now, obviously out there in the mainstream, but certainly in our profession. We just don't understand how to interact with this technology, and it's creating many massive problems. Some other misconceptions that it's just not good is all these models that people are using. And I know you're gonna get a demo of one here shortly that is not this. But like OpenAI or Google Bard, all those consumer-facing models. They're what we call general. They're general models. They're not specific or task-focused. Okay, so they're supposed to be like the jack of all trades, but master of none. So legal research. Yeah, you can do it. I would not rely on it at all. It will return some things that look good. Yes, you can have it analyze a contract. It may be amazing at doing that. And the next contract you use it for, it may be horrendous. It's because these tools, as they were released, are general purpose tools. We're now rapidly advancing to the specific tooling era of generative AI, where we're starting to narrow our focus with these models. And I'm gonna sort of share an emerging, I wouldn't call it technology, but technique that companies are using that I want to make sure that you all are familiar with here in a couple of seconds. We've just had to do this ourselves as users, DIY, learn it ourselves, and there just isn't a lot of good resources out there for us to do this. We've just had to sort of play with it, and some people know how to do that, and other people don't without getting in trouble. I want to spend a little time on hallucinations because we are fascinated with this concept in legal. And I think there's some debunking that I'd like to do here, and I don't have all the answers. I'm just gonna debunk some myth. Hopefully. So in my opinion, and I would consider myself an intermediate to expert user of this technology at this point. I use it every day. And I teach it. Hallucinations is a feature. It's not a bug. Hallucinations actually built in to the model. It's part of its value proposition. You can think of hallucination, it sort of has a negative connotation to it. I mean, it depends on the trip that you're on. You could you could hallucinate and have a fabulous time, or it could be scary and frightening. We tend to think of it as bad, right? Just substitute creativity in there, because that's what these models are exceptional at. Creative capability with language or imagery or video or sound. So we call them hallucinations because that reflects our unfounded expectation that these things have to give us fact, accuracy, and always be truthful. We instilled that belief onto these models. They didn't come to us and say, you can rely on this. In fact, every leading model has in their terms of use, do not expect one hundred percent accuracy or precision. Do not rely on the output of these models as being completely factual. So we've created this expectation that they are factual, and it's completely unfounded. Let's dig into this a little bit more. I like analogies. Hopefully this works. So going back to how these models work, what you're looking at is a set, right? So any of you theater or have you gone to a theater, you know that sets are designed to mimic real life. Now, on this set, you have something that is actually a real physical lamp. There's a chair. You can see that, right? But there's also windows and there's lighting, and it's not really a window. This is not really the exterior of the building. What we're interacting with these models is just think of them as presenting a set back to us. Sometimes the set looks really good and everything is truthful. Everything's factual. Other times, things are just kind of duct taped and stuck together in a way that mimics what reality looks like. So when you're looking at a prompt of these models, you should be immediately assessing what is truly factual and what is giving me the appearance of fact. Now, there's capabilities emerging that are helping us do this. So this is a new, not new, it's new to us, common users, not new to sort of the data scientists and AI scientists working on this. You're gonna hear a term, if you haven't heard it already, called RAG, Retrieval Augmented Generation. Now, yes, this gets a little bit technical, but hopefully this image helps you understand what's happening. This is where things are going right now to help control hallucinations. Basically, using RAG, we can point our prompt to a a database, our own database, your database inside your organization. A controlled environment of data that you know to be truthful, you know to be accurate. It represents the knowledge of the organization, could be a document management system, could be your financial system. Okay, so you can point your prompt to this. The this technique basically goes to your information first. It then regenerates the prompt based on what it knows to be true now and then makes a call to the L L M and then brings forth a response. What this technique is doing is it's controlling for hallucinations. It's trying to get these models more pointed towards trusted information. So Retrieval Augmented Generation is being employed. This is part of how enterprises, companies and law firms are bringing these L L Ms in to their enterprise or company stack. This is one of the ways that they're doing this to help fortify the their data and help fortify the hallucination tendencies of these models to sort of limit them. Now, another one that just came out recently, again, not to get too technical, but this is Google. So Aspire is a new technique that Google actually just released or didn't release. They talked about today. And this is where they're training these models to basically run a series of answers and then score or weight those answers based on what the model knows, quote unquote, and give you a score or a confidence indicator basically where I'm ten percent sure this is right, or I'm ninety percent sure this is right. Okay, so we're seeing, you see sort of this run on the panel here, just asking vitamins assist in blood clotting. And you can sort of see that it comes up with vitamin K and I'm ninety percent confident that's true versus President Ford's middle name. I'm not really confident that it's true. Now, they're trying to build this in to guide the user to help us out a little bit in in managing these. The other example I'll give you on managing this is, this is from Google Bard. Now, this is from a response. I was working with Bard. Now, Bard allows you to basically click the little Google icon, the little G colorful G there. You're gonna see under understand these results. And it goes back into its response, and it basically tells you by color coding the highlights things that it can verify or point to, not that it's truthful, just that there is a source that I Bard used to generate that response, and I'll give you that source. And the orange is where I might have made something up, and I don't have a source to point you to. So I'm showing you these examples because think of how far we've come in a few months. These did not exist, these techniques, to help guide the user and manage our sort of understanding around what's going on with these prompts. So I think that hallucination, yes, we, it's a word we have to live by. Yes, there's techniques that are coming under control, but we don't want to remove the creativity. We don't want to sort of chill these models to a point where they're just giving us facts and all that, because we have tools for that right now. That that's sort of, that's sort of pruning the unique capability of these models down to the point where they're nothing but a semantic search engine, which which we've had and had for for many years now. I'm just gonna take a pause there, because I want to do a clock check on my time. I don't want to occupy or eat up too much clock and or take time for questions. So if someone can sort of guide me on that, I'd be much obliged.
Josh, you're good on time, and I I can't read the room for questions.
Good on time, like I have more, or you want me to stop?
You have more. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, all right, fair enough. And if people do have questions, just please interrupt me. The final misconception, and this is something that it's difficult to get tangible conversation around, but it's something I'm really eager to discuss with all of you. At least plant the seed. And I call this sort of the existential threat, first principles versus business and companion versus competitor. So first principles. Right now, the profession is looking at the impact to the consumer of legal services, as it should, and the lawyer and how we use the tool to get legal research done, what can we rely on, what can't we? What are our professional responsibilities? How do we interpret those to accommodate for generative AI and this new technology? All very, very valuable, a hundred percent. But there's an immense human value that too few are really looking at right now, and I just want to spend some time. So this, this is a study that some of you may be familiar with that BCG put out. And BCG, knowledge workers, consulting, not too dissimilar to what the legal profession does in terms of how we solve problems, very information, knowledge-intensive, running heuristics in our brain based on past precedent and all that kind of stuff. So they basically wanted to measure outputs, okay? And you can see that the consultants who were using generative AI finished twelve percent more tasks. They did it more quickly, much to the chagrin of the billable hour model, and forty percent higher quality results. Now, we can sort of go into how they measure these things, sort of out of scope for this, but if anyone's interested, I'm happy to send you this study after this, if you want to ping me. And this is really good. This this is a great study. It's showing the business impact of generative AI in our organizations, and this is very interesting, and we should be paying attention to this. But I think we're paying too much attention to this, because this is something else. And pardon sort of the rudimentary graph here. But basically, what you're looking at is you're looking at us, lawyers, and our, say, we wake up, we wake up in the morning, right, and we're facing our day. And generally, our cognitive resources have to spike. We get up in the morning, we've got to look at our calendar. Maybe there's seventeen different things on there, some pleasant, many unpleasant, some opportunities or demand for deep work, some burden for doing transactional, quick fire off fifteen emails, have a phone call and all that. Our cognitive load, our cognitive stress that we're carrying peaks and then it starts to deplete over the course of the day. Right? And that's what you see. We know this leads to many of our poor health and mental health problems in this profession. You may say, Josh, why are you talking generative AI and mental health? Because I believe and I have seen through my example and by working with lawyers and just showing them one tiny function, one life-changing function, putting ChatGPT on their mobile phone, showing them how to have a conversation if they're taking a walk on the treadmill or outside in the morning, and unpacking their brain over their to-dos, over their stress, over what's going on, and giving them the tools to prompt these tools to then basically act like a chief of staff, like a companion, like a peer, someone who's taking some of the cognitive load, the transactional cost that that is exerted on us every day, and completely removing, completely removing from our days. This, I think, is something that's truly, at the very beginning of us starting to understand, and is probably the most impactful element of generative AI. Yes, we can look at how it impacts delivery of legal services and and having chatbots on our websites to help self-represent a litigants, all very important, hundred percent. This personal impact of what this technology can bring to this profession who often suffers from cognitive exertion and overexertion is material. I believe it's tangible. I've lived it.
Josh, I apologize. I had the timing off, so I'm gonna stop you there, I think, because I actually think it's a good segue into into Dorna's demonstration of Gavel, because I think a lot of what Gavel can accomplish is kind of streamlining and improving processes as it relates to the practice of law and the impact it can have on clients. So thank you, Josh, and I apologize. I had the timing off.
No, all good. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Erica, and thank you. Thank you, Josh. That was great. And thank you to the board for allowing me to present. So what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna go ahead and share a few slides, and we can go ahead and get started. All right, so so I think some of the the conversation that has been had already has set a really great foundation and stage for what we're about to discuss right now. Just as a brief introduction of myself, my name is Dora Mooney. I am the CEO and founder of Gavel, which is a legal automation infrastructure for law firms. And what we do is we handle end-to-end automation for work that is rules-based or process-oriented. And then we introduce generative AI features for mostly our onboarding and workflow-building processes, which I'll I'll dive into all of that in a little bit more detail in a minute. But I, in order to kind of set the stage of why we landed here and why we're doing what we what we're doing now, I want to give you some background on on how I ended up here. So this all stemmed from some of my pro bono work. I worked, I practiced law for almost a decade at last at Sidley Austin and worked a lot on pro bono matters involving domestic violence survivors. And what I was finding was that there were so many of the areas of law that I was helping them with that I felt could be automated in some way, shape or form. So at first, what I wanted to build was something sort of like TurboTax or LegalZoom, but not given to the to the consumer on their own, but really something that could be be handled hand in hand with the attorney, myself, other pro bono attorneys or legal aid organizations, legal aid attorneys at legal aid organizations. So we built that tool, and we started hearing from so many other lawyers that they wanted to build similar tools. And so what Gavel is, is Gavel really is sort of like your software developer in your back pocket. It helps attorneys, legal professionals, anyone who has the expertise that they want to put into the system to take that knowledge and turn it into a software tool. And what this looks like in practice is we have tons of legal aid organizations, law firms, courts, about over over fourteen thousand users across the world using our platform, who are, many of them are from companies that you may know as well, things like Just Tech and Landlord Legal and Hello Divorce, and many of the legal aid organizations here in California like Bet Zetic and Barrier Legal and Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. So our approach really did start from a legal services perspective, and we strongly believe that the goal of access to justice will be met through both technology and humans really working together in this way. So before we really dive into some of the the actual tool, I'll give you a quick demo of of our platform and how it works and a few of the customers and a few of the customers that we have who are using it. I want to address two things that, that come up very often, especially when we're talking about regulation of the legal field. And those are replacement, our attorney is going to be replaced and what, and does that matter? And should it matter? And, and what do we do about it? And second, which is pricing and how things should be priced. And on those two topics, I think, you know, will there be less lawyers? We really think not because as many of the people who are, were here today know, there is a huge portion of Americans, a huge portion of Californians, now around 80 to 90%, depending on which geography you're looking at, who do not have access to legal services, sometimes critical life and death legal services. And lawyers, through the use of technology, I'll give some of these examples who are, that are having impact already. Through, through the use of technology, whether it's rules-based systems, whether it's generative AI, are now being able to access this population, which is also increasing the, the scope of the, the legal market, but also increasing access. And on pricing, that's one, that's one of those areas where we are really going to need to think hard and deep as, as attorneys who are part of this field on how we, how we're going to price going forward. Because if for some of these models, billable, billable hours just don't work anymore. So we end, they, they were never affordable to much of, much of the population. So we can introduce, and you know, many are already doing this, alternative fee models that serve both the demand and the supply side. So lawyers can generate volume-based practices where they are providing quality services to their, to their clients. But also, at the same, at the same time, the consumers are receiving quality services at more affordable rates because it's not bespoke one-on-one legal services. So I'm going to dive into a few examples in a moment. But I also just want to paint across this spectrum of all of the different, I think a lot of times we, we look at the hierarchy of different AI-type tools. And I want to paint to you where Gavel fits within this spectrum. So AI, as many of you know, you know, very fairly broad term from the 50s, machine learning is one type of AI. Another type of AI is rules-based systems. So systems in which you can configure these if-this, then-that type rules, logic rules. And then as part of machine learning, you have a subset of that, of machine learning that is generative AI. So we are, Gavel is a rules-based system. Plus, we also use generative AI and large language models. Specifically, we are using OpenAI's GPT model, which we've, we've been really fortunate to be able to get really early access to newer, newer models as they've come and be able to vet them against each other. We are using those tools in order to allow our customers to create these rules-based workflows. And I'll dive more into that in a moment as well. But first, I want to show you just a few use cases. Because I think taking a look at some of the use cases that are out there, who are, they're being built on, on Gavel will give you a really good overview. So one of those use cases is a company called Rent Intervention. And this was started by someone named Connor Malloy at a, at a legal aid organization. And what he really wanted to do was build a tool that connects generative AI, access to information, helping you actually understand what your legal problem is and whether you have a legal problem with practical and immediate legal, legal documents and legal advice that you can use. And why, why this is really important is I think that when we, the, 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 one, one main distinction with respect to the types of work that we do at, at Gavel that I want to make is between rules-based systems and generative AI. And the fact that when you're using a rules-based system, you know that every single time that you give it a certain set of data, you are going to get the same exact answer because you have set up logical rules to end up in the same place. And so, so in some ways that is very, very powerful for systems where you do already have rules. And as we all know, that's what we are attempting to do with the law when we, when statutes and case law are, are promulgated. We're trying to give if-then rules for society to be able to operate on them. Now, that's on one side. On the other side is generative AI. Generative AI, as, as Josh was also mentioning, you know, creativity is, is one of those, one of those benefits that there, there are. However, when you put a particular fact pattern into, into a generative AI tool, it's going to give you a slightly different answer every time. Not to say that those answers are going to be wrong, but it's like if you gave, you know, two different interns the same question, most, mostly hopefully they are going to land in the same place, but the type of answer they're going to give you is, is going to be different. And so going back to the example of Rent Intervention, what Rent Intervention has done is they have built a tool that is a chatbot for informational purposes. And then is, and that uses OpenAI. And then they routed over to Gavel to actually generate documents and work product. And in that, in that piece of the Gavel system, they know that it's going to give the same exact answer every single time. So I'm going to have a little video here and I'm going to hopefully, I'm going to try to play it without sound and just show you really briefly, here we go. Let's, so I'm going to just click through this video to show you how it works. So as you can see, this Rennie is what they called it to make it a little cutesy and make people really gamify the system a little bit. So you go through the system, Rennie, you enter, enter questions about your, you know, you've written that you have mold. And what the, what Rennie, Rent Prevention's tool is trying to do is actually figure out if you have a legal issue. And so it's doing that through, through generative AI tool that searches their database. And also at some point, right through, right as you're continuing to talk to it, will give you articles from the knowledge base. So then you go into a knowledge base that is specifically being, been created by Rent Intervention and by, by the Law Center. And you know that the articles that it's providing you are written by the experts at, at the Law Center. And then, once you get into this database, into this, into this knowledge base, it then routes you, once it knows that you have a particular issue. So for example, in this particular case, it routed you somewhere where it, it figured out that you needed a 14-day notice. You needed to respond to a 14-day notice of eviction. And so now it knows exactly what your issue was, exactly where you are in this position and exactly what type of document you need to generate. And so that's the point at which it goes into the Gavel workflow, which you can see here, where it's going to ask you a rules-based workflow, routing you down different paths. And then at the end of that process, asking you all these questions and end that process generating documents for you to use, to file and potentially routing you to, to additional assistance if you need it. So I think that's, that to me is really one of the ideal scenarios where you're using the generative AI pieces for the parts where, where you need a little bit of that creativity, where you need, where you can't necessarily predict exactly what you need to tell, tell the client or which way you need to route them, because there are so many potential answers they're going to give you to start with. And then you're routing them for the actual creation of legal work product. You're routing them to a place where you have certainty that you're going to provide something truly quality and excellent at the end of the day. So that's one example. I want to give just one second example, which is an example from clinical program that, and this one is more targeted at attorneys and legal aid organizations using Gavel in order to assist the client. So, but it's, it's more of a hybrid representation model. And what, what Betzettic was able to find that is that in their clinical program, in this particular case, this was for their trans rights clinic, they were able to serve 10x more clients in the same amount of time when they had a ton of volume because they had these workflows to guide themselves. They had these workflows to guide new pro bono attorneys who might not have been as familiar with the area, even though they are legal experts in other areas. And they're able to, to really streamline that process. So those are, those are two examples of the type of work that we do and what it looks like in practice. Now, what I want to show you is, as you see, this is, this is sort of what we've built, is we have this questionnaire that the legal professional creates. You add all sorts of logic to it. I mean, I cannot tell you how deep these rules and logic can go. It's all, it's all possible to be done by a non-technical, non-engineer person who uses a drag-and-drop, drag-and-drop interface. If you can spell it out and if-this, then-not rules, you can create Gavel workflows for it. Then you have this, this intake that is being done all through, it's mobile-friendly, it's, and you know, accessibility is another, another big, another big factor here, but it's mobile-friendly, it is desktop-friendly, you can use it from any, anywhere. And then it generates the documents that you want. In these embedded workflows, you can also provide additional information like videos and images and audio to guide people through these processes, whether it's, it's a consumer who's using it or whether it is actually just someone within the firm or another attorney who's being guided through a process that is new to them. And so the, to, to show you a little bit more about what the generative AI features are that then take, that, that turn your work product into these workflows. I'm going to show you a few screenshots that go through this. And this is actually something that we were just working with the Berkeley Center for Law and Technology. We had over a hundred legal aid organizations over the past few months working on tech, getting, testing these types of tools. And many of them have been able to launch products and tools that they're now using in-house to scale up their services. So it's really had a big impact in the legal field and particularly the legal, legal aid field as well. So going back over here to how you are able to, to create with Gavel a tool through generative AI that is both understandable and controllable. Those are the two big pieces that I think are really, really critical to us and we, that we think are really important. We think it's really important that the legal professional who's building these workflows understands what it is. And the way that we ensure that is that you, as the legal professional, are the person who puts all of the source data into the, into the, into the system. So as you can see, you can build things from scratch, but you can also build things with Gavel, Gavel AI or what we call Gavel Blueprint, which is giving you the blueprint for, for these workflows. And what you do is you will then load all the different documents that are your perfect work product into the system. So it's really a silo of, of quality work product.
I apologize. I'm gonna, I'm gonna only pause you only because I have been told we have a hard, or close to hard stop at two o'clock and I want to make sure Shannon has an opportunity too. So I apologize, but if you want to wrap it up quickly, if you can, and then I'll let Shannon take over.
Yes, absolutely. I'll just do like one more minute through this and I, I will end there. Is that, does that work?
Yeah, one more or even faster.
Okay, perfect, okay. So that, this turns this into a workflow, you can, you can accept or reject. And if anyone wants to see more of this, we'd be happy to give you free logins to, to actually try this product out. So please feel free to reach out if you. All right, I will go ahead and stop sharing.
Thank you so much. And Shannon, I apologize for such a, such a short amount of time to continue on, but if you want to close us out, I greatly appreciate it.
I think Shannon might be muted.
Yeah, Shannon, you're on mute.
Sorry about that. So thank you again for having me here to speak to the California State Bar Board and to Dorna and to Josh for their groundwork here. I'll move through my presentation quicker than I, than I intended, but if you have any questions along the way, please ask. You know, we've used AI and analytics for some time. And what difference, differentiates Gen AI's ability to generate content like text, images and video? There's some conflation between the two at times, so it's an important distinction for the board to understand that there's a very traditional use of AI and, and generative AI is kind of the new kid on the block. And within generative AI itself, each one of the feature sets that it has requires its own review and analysis and study to see how it might work or require rules or other regulations governing its use. In a recent study put out by E-Discovery today, it was put out about two weeks ago. It looked at what law firms are doing today with generative AI. And I think most of us are kind of in the, what we'd call the kicking tires stage with about 70% of law firms taking a serious look at it and a relatively low percentage of law firms actually having implemented. We've implemented some AI features, we're getting ready to roll out others. And we have our eye on a number of other technologies, generative AI technologies that are going to help us out in the near future. And, and I find this, this to be very similar to my peers in the industry. Where are we in the hype cycle? We're, we're at the peak, the peak of inflated expectations in terms of what people think it can do and how it's going to do it. Gen AI echoes past technology transformations like email and security. The return on investment for legal efficiency is not always the goal. Of course, it's, it's a, it's a major goal of what we're going to do. But you know, one outcome, one, one goal is also that we have better case knowledge and work product that comes out of it. So in a, in a workflow where an attorney might ask a generative AI solution to summarize some documents and query it, you may actually take more time than you did in the past, but you'll have greater case knowledge and understanding of your, of your, of your information. And you might be able to even ask it things like anticipate which questions, based on these previous briefs, which questions will the judge ask me at trial, right? And that would be a great way of prepping. Very analogous to security education in terms of what the industry needs to do to up the level of required skill and knowledge necessary to competently use generative AI solutions. Attorneys are pretty good prompting engineers already based on their ability to create a, a good question. We have had success at our firm with a sandbox event where people get out and they test, test the software. And we had a class designed around that that was very successful at the firm. There's a lot of work to do. We need to understand its limitations, methods of validation, you know, how, how that result was reached. I'd encourage law firms, and maybe this is a great area for the California bar, to create data sets that, that can be used in testing and evaluation of, of technology tools. People's technical ability needs to, of course, be raised. Security issues like keeping client data segregated, how in a, in an LLM where all the data is aggregated somewhere, do we keep specific client data segregated? And that's an issue even in closed models. There are ethical duties for attorneys of technical competence and diligence. You know, did they do all the work necessary to do the, to do the job competently? Workflow, the workflow is not going to be some easy button where you just use the generative AI tool. All the other tools that are kind of in the landscape of legal technology are still needed to, to, to competently and efficiently move cases forward. There will be mistakes made with hallucination. We, we've talked about that, we've heard those examples, but what are we going to do when someone overlooks on summaries? And a summary is just that, it can be, you can have a mistake in it where, where it's not adequately summarized. I've done tests where names weren't pulled out correctly in, in a transcript, the main party wasn't, his name wasn't pulled out in the transcript. Competency obligations, there was a recent study of, of, of using Gen AI as a document review tool for first-level document review. And the results were widely heralded as amazing. But it was a relatively simple matter where they, they received this 85 to 95% accuracy result. When the result, when the data set is a little bit more complex, it still takes people. And that, that accuracy, when using generative AI goes down to 60, 65% or below. So you know, what are we going to do when an unsophisticated user puts complicated data into a generative AI solution? And it'll just be a terrible result in that case, right? Moving forward, it's still very expensive. We're kind of in a gold rush territory with a lot of the vendors who aren't giving us a lot of time to, to often analyze and test their products. A lot of tools are still in development or just being released. We don't talk a lot about token costs for automated reviews. So sometimes, a lot of the vendors are setting up situations where each document returned will, will be a charge and I'm carrying as high as 30 or 40 cents in a document review situation. So you apply this to a million documents, it would cost you $300,000 to $400,000. So I think what that'll actually result in is more complex workflows where maybe you use traditional keywords or other date limitations and only use generative AI on smaller sets of data. I think the bar can help by not treating it broadly. There's this broad, many varieties of generative AI that require their own study, as I mentioned in the beginning. Helping with education around Gen AI use, helping with access, it's an access to justice issue for AI tools. Encouraging ethical use and technical competence. And personally, I think they should oppose disclosure rules that require disclosure of AI use. Um, and personally, I think they should oppose disclosure rules, um, that require disclosure of AI use. As a judge I heard recently at a conference said, that's like asking, uh, someone to pull weeds from a house that is on fire, so, um, uh, the, you know, what does AI use mean in that context? You know, we have spell checkers, we have, you know, we, we want people to make their, their, uh, paragraphs more succinct and on point. And having to disclose things like that and not lose things like that just gets in the way of implementation.
Shannon, I think oh, I, I have apologized as I'm mindful of the time and the, and the time we were given. And I think that may be a good stopping point. If, if any of the trustees have questions for, uh, Shannon, Dorna or Josh, um, I think they would welcome them and I want to thank the speakers for, um, sharing their time and, uh, and, uh, the information that they provided for everyone today. Um, and I also can speak very briefly to kind of what the state bar is exploring as it relates to generative AI. Um, if, if that's the will of the trustees.
I have a comment to make that I've been waiting to make. So, I really appreciate yesterday in the presentation on the, um, legislative priorities, that there was a portion where in some of the summaries, it was disclosed that it was AI generated. I appreciated that very much, okay? I like that kind of transparency and in some ways it kind of parallels some of the early, um, uh, policies that we've adopted about, um, the ethical use of AI, um, guidance that, that, that we've issued. That there should be some sort of, you know, transparency. I will say this, that, um, I'm very disturbed by today's presentation because it was so one-sided. Our job is not to promote the use of AI. Our job is to regulate it, there's a difference there. And I very much dislike propaganda presentations that only present one side of an issue, that's the definition of propaganda, one side. The, there is a contest, there is dispute. The use of AI is controversial, not everybody buys that it's a good thing for society or it's a good thing. I certainly don't, okay? And to have one-sided, I'm very disturbed. I would expect a future meeting at which we will have a presentation from skeptics of AI. But really, it is not our role to promote or discourage AI. But it is our role to understand it well enough to regulate it and that our discussions, whenever I believe we have them, should be on how do we protect the public from potential abuses of AI by legal practitioners? I think that's what should be our focus and I don't feel that was the focus today. I'm just giving my opinion. I don't believe in AI, the promise of AI as the presenters today have.
I mean,
No, I, I would like to just jump in because I, I think I, uh, worked with Erica on this. The intention is not to advocate for AI, but the intention was to help the board have some baseline understanding of what's going on with AI in the legal industry, this is what you're asked to, to regulate. So that was the intention, um. And I, I guess I would say you can believe in it or not believe in it, but we know that lawyers are using it. We know for example that our own staff are using it. So we, for example, as an employer, we could choose to ignore that or, or we could choose to say you can't use it. But that would be unrealistic because we know people are using it. So rather, what have we chosen to do? Put out guidelines as an employer for here's the responsible use of AI. So based on my conversations with different board members, it was clear that there's a vast difference between like a Highland at Munger and how they're using it. And what some of our board members that are public lawyer attorneys are doing, uh, in their organizational settings with AI. And that gap, I fear, is exacerbating the real disparities that you have in the legal profession. Because who's becoming more efficient? It's big law, that's already, you know, they're about maximizing profit, they're becoming more efficient, they're using these tools. Are public law lawyers and then take that translate to legal aid? They're getting left behind. So I think yes, public protection is important, but part of public protection is increasing access. And there is a reality, whether you agree with it or not, that these tools have and can increase access if responsibly regulated. And so there's, I agree, there's two sides to that discussion, but as a foundational matter, the board has to know what it is. And so that was the intent today, so I apologize if we missed the mark on that, but that was the intent, not to advocate for it. I will say that as Dorna was doing her presentation, I was having some exchange with a couple of folks on the team that is on the front lines of billing two hundred and fifty thousand people where I'm inundated with complaints about our lack of responsiveness and how long things are taking. And one solution is to hire fifty more people. Another solution is, can we meet with Dorna and figure out if we can apply any of these if-then tools to that process? So, so I think, Mark, those are the realities that we're facing here and, and the intention was simply to educate, not to advocate. And if, again, if we missed the mark, I, I apologize for that.
And, and my only point is, I wish we would have had somebody who says, you know what? There are people who think AI is not wor- is not worth it. That this being left behind is a good thing because it, um, because where AI leads us, we don't know and could lead to very bad outcomes. And so, I, I, I'm saying that I feel this was not a balanced conversation. And yes, we should look at what the potential, I'm willing to explore the, uh, potential of using AI to, um, increase efficiencies. But I would like to hear more about, and here's reasons you may not want to do it. Okay, so that we see both sides and then that, that helps with decision making. Um, I, I really dislike conferences where I call it a love fest because everybody at the conference and on the panel is speaking in favor of the same thing. And you don't have people who are skeptics saying, here's what you have to worry about. Here's where it may not work out. That's to me what was missing from today. I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that, but I just wanted to express it.
Yeah, I think if I could just add, um, you know, from my standpoint, um, oftentimes we're afraid of that which we don't understand and not to say that, um, you know, that it's, that's, it's an irrational fear, but I really took this as just the next step in this board's understanding of that issue. And I think your point is well taken, that, uh, that we need to have individuals who have a differing viewpoint. And certainly that we're not asking the board to make any decisions right now. But one of the, the common themes that I've heard throughout the past couple of days is operational efficiency, being able to cut, um, cut things that we can and improve processes. And I think it's, you know, something that this board really needs to grapple with and we certainly will, um, you know, in, in coming days. And so this is not the end of the conversation, I just view it as, as that next step. And certainly, um, you know, we can work with staff and if we need to put together a little working group to, um, you know, to make sure that both sides are, are, uh, are accounted for in future presentations, then absolutely, I think that's, that's going to be a part of the next step going forward. So I, I appreciated the presentation from the standpoint of this is what's out there, this is how people are using it, maybe it's going to help us now, but let's continue to ask questions and engage. And so that's, that's what I hear from your comments that you want to continue to engage, hopefully, okay? Yes, trustee Trejo.
I, I just want to share an experience that might be helpful. Um, so I, I used to like to buy sneakers online, right? And I, and, and I just could never get them. I was just wasn't fast enough, I couldn't get on online or whatever. And I heard that these things called bots could come in and they can help you with the process. So honestly, I went in with a friend of mine who's kind of a wonky computer guy and we just asked ChatGPT or some variation of ChatGPT to create one of these bots for me. So that when that this came, then this process came again, I was able to win this thing, right? Now, as, as we're facing all these technological issues here, uh, IT issues, what, 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 what we want to do and how we want to serve folks. I think it's going to be up to our consultants to use AI to perhaps come in and help these processes along, maybe create a different work with the, I don't, I don't know what network or onward protocols we're using, but these things are extremely useful. Um, for someone like me who isn't technical, to be able to in real terms, in real words, say, hey, can you put together this thing called a bot for me? And can you, can it make it do this? And again, it's all about the prompt, as, as most of the folks have been saying, uh, here is, it's about the prompt and getting that right and getting it accurate. Now is, you get into the enterprise side, it's a little different, but I think that this could be, I don't see how AI isn't going to have a, have a role in how we improve our IT processes moving forward. It's just, it's, it's that much quicker and it's that much faster. So I appreciate your, your comments for sure. And I think that we should look at it more closely, but I think this is more from the perspective of a regulator rather than an attorney. I mean, because, because what we saw today was effectively a presentation, if, you know, for, for a product that's used for attorney specifically. In our case, we would use AI for a different purpose, right? To improve our processes, it may not be, uh, I mean, improve our pages, we had a couple of issues recently with those things that those things might come in handy for that, so I just wanted to add that.
Well, also recall that we have, I don't know, two hundred attorneys or a hundred and fifty attorneys at the state bar. We're the size of a medium-sized law firm, so even tools for lawyers very much, yeah.
So the, uh, so the governor has issued a, an executive order around, uh, generative AI. Uh, the president has issued executive orders around, um, generative AI and they, they call for, particularly in government, um, to, to look at the risk, uh, to look at the benefits, to look at the challenges, to look at the sort of the effects on uh, different communities, uh, different populations, uh, et cetera. And, uh, Lee, I know you've had, uh, I mentioned this to you and I know you've had some conversation with the Government Operations Agency who is sort of charged with sort of executing and implementing the, the governor and doing also the reporting requirements that are associated with that uh, executive order. It doesn't sound like in, um, in what you've reported back to me, that they necessarily are going to capture us in, in some of that, uh, and I'm just wondering if we should be pushing more as it relates to that.
Well, they're not capturing us, but I will say in the last like three weeks, they've done an incredible amount of work and I've been, um, sending it, including to Erica, um, saying like, I'm really impressed. So they've put out requests for, uh, basically proposals, but they have use cases from all over state government. And they're asking for AI vendors to come in and say, how would you address this? They're opening up a regulatory sandbox for different AI vendors to do their, um, to come in and like give their ideas. So the first one they have is, um, the tax board customer service. So they've come out with a lot, we are not included, but we are certainly going to leverage what they've done. They have a whole like guidelines for AI procurement for state government, so it's moving very fast now. Um, and I think we're certainly going to leverage it.
All right, any other questions? Comments? Also keeping in mind that, uh, our attention levels are waning as that graph, so, uh, I think we should have had a you are here in our attention levels, but no, I, I just want to thank the presenters, thank you to staff for your attention to, uh, this very interesting and important, uh, topic. Certainly, I think in the past ten years, no, no greater, uh, or no technology has generated as much buzz and conversation. And so I think it is imperative for the state bar to continue to be in this space and to, uh, to be involved in those conversations. So thank you, uh, for all that you're doing and, uh, have a good rest of your Friday.
Thank you. Bye.
All right, if there is nothing else, um, I am going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for, uh, being with, with us for the past couple of days. I'm really encouraged after our planning session and the trajectory of the state bar and where we're going. And, uh, just know that everything that we do is accomplished because of you as a team, uh, on the board of trustees as well as staff. I just want to thank staff for a fantastic, uh, planning session, all the work that went in behind the scenes. Want to thank Vice Chair, uh, Cisneros, uh, Highland Chen, uh, Trustee Tony and, uh, for all that you did to, uh, to help plan these, uh, last couple of days. So, bon voyage, have a great weekend and we'll see you soon.